Immediately after the public speaking, I'll ask if there are any immediate questions that members have, and then hopefully that will focus on the subsequent debate. So just a thought, if you haven't asked a question of the officers, and you have got one planned for this evening, we'll do that at the beginning. Right, moving on. Minutes of the last meeting held on the 17th of January, they've been laid on, it's over for half an hour prior to the meeting, is it your wish I signed them as a true record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Welcome back, Emma. Apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillors John Ward, Stephen Mulliner and John Gray.
Thank you very much. Declaration of interest, Emma?
None prior to the meeting.
Moving on, questions from members of the public, Emma, have we had any?
None received.
Fine. Item number five, performance against government targets, Steve Weaver.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Members. As I explained at last week's JPC, and for councillors who weren't there, the performance against government targets is a piece of work that will be reported to all committees coming forward. Unfortunately, the data wasn't available at the time of finalising this agenda, but it is on the agenda and has already been published in connection with the Southern and Western area committees, starting next week, and then it will follow on through the Eastern and Central and JPC in the weeks to come. I hope it's helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve, we look forward to that. Item number six, application for planning permission, it was a B, it's now an A1. Land west of Svetoskopsk, Lockwood Road, Allfold. Approval of reserve matters, that's appearance, landscaping, layout and scale, following the outline approval of WA 2015 2261, for the erection of 55 dwellings, including 22 affordable, associated landscaping and open space, children's play area and private drainage system. And to introduce this is Officer Rebecca Clarke.
Thank you Chairman. Members will recall that this item was taken before the joint planning committee in November of last year. The item was deferred to allow the applicant to make amendments to address Members' concerns. The concerns expressed related to: the regimented and suburban layout, the extent and design of hard standing, the scale and heights of dwellings, the location of the leap and the location of affordable dwellings. Members also requested that officers liaise with Southern Water, and I can confirm that they have raised no objection to the proposal. So to briefly remind Members of the site and the proposal, the vision plan can be seen on the screen. The site is located to the east of Lockwood Road and comprises an open field. There are residential properties located to the north and west, and there's a mixture of single-storey and two-storey residential properties. There's a nursery school located to the south and open fields to the east. So to put the sites in some context, there's some photographs on screen. Outline permission for up to 55 dwellings was granted in 2015, so the principle of development of 55 dwellings has already been established and access has been agreed at the outline stage. The current application seeks approval for the layout, appearance, scale and landscaping. Turning to layout firstly, the plans show 55 dwellings spread across the site. There would be a mixture of onsite and off-site parking spaces, an area of public open space and locally equipped area of play would be located to the north of the site. Turning to scale, the dwellings would be two-storey in height with some single-storey elements such as porches and single-storey projections. The density would be 19.8 dwellings per hectare, and the heights of the dwellings would range from 6.1 metres, which would be the bungalows, to 9.5 metres. There would be a mixture of one, two, three and four bed units on site, and a total of 138 parking spaces would be provided. Turning to landscaping, the majority of the tree cover would remain on site. A small number of trees would be removed owing to their poor condition or small size. There are no high-quality trees that would be removed. The public open space would be grassed. Areas to the west and north-west of the site would be seeded with a meadow mixture for wetlands, and there would be amenity planting to the front of dwellings. The areas of hard standing would include tarmac to roads and pavements, and there would be concrete block paving for driveways. In terms of boundary treatments, a mixture of close-boarded fencing and brick screen walls would be utilised. So looking at the changes which have taken place since the deferral at the November committee, the slide on screen shows a comparison between the two schemes. As Members will see, the site layout has been amended to show a more informal layout. The leap has been repositioned within the site, so originally, if I just point out, it was in the north-east corner, and now it's been moved to a more central location to the north of the site. The parking provision has increased from 120 spaces to 138 spaces, and the amount of off-site parking, so if I point out the previous parking bays, those areas have been reduced. The site would provide for an additional two bungalows, which takes the total to four. These would be located in the north. And all units would be two-storey with no habitable accommodation provided in the roof space. And just to confirm, the scheme would ensure full compliance with the technical space standards. So turning to appearance, the next few slides are going to show Members some of the elevations for the proposed dwellings. On the screen at the moment, you'll see house type eight and nine, these are three-bed detached dwellings. Turning now to house type 10 and house type 11, this provides example of four-bed and three-bed respectively, detached dwellings. House type 12 and 13 would both be four-bed detached dwellings. House types three and four, which comprise two and three-bed dwellings, these would be an example of the affordable units on site. Turning now to the bungalows, of which there would be four provided on the site, these are one-bed. And to give Members an idea of the flatted units, all of these would be the affordable units, and these would comprise a mixture of one and two beds. This is showing the flat over garage, and there would be a mixture of single and double garages provided on site. Apologies for the size of this, but this would show a section within the site towards the rear of the site, the eastern location. So just turning to the determining issues, the matter of judgements before Members this evening are the design and impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, and the provision of amenity space and play space. If I could turn Members' attention, there are a couple of update sheets. Firstly, there is a written update sheet, this sets out the amended plans which have been received since the drafting of the agenda report, and it also sets out the education infrastructure contributions which have been confirmed by Surrey County Council. There are additional letters of representation which have been received, the objections are set out on the written update sheet, and officers have noted these and responded accordingly. I would also turn Members' attention to a second verbal update sheet. As the representation date fell after the written update sheet, I can now verbally confirm that two further letters of representation have been received. The objections raised are set out on the verbal update sheet and have been addressed accordingly. In further response to the concern which has been raised regarding light pollution and lighting on site, lighting details were agreed under condition 14 of the outline permission. There is no street lighting to be provided on site, but external lights would be provided on each of the dwellings. With regard to the highway comments which have been raised, particularly the rumble strips, officers were advised that these measures were suggested by the County Highway Authority to address the speeds on the road, and these measures have been secured at the outline stage. In further response to the concerns raised regarding boundary treatments, officers would recommend an additional condition to secure the full details of boundary treatment, and this has been recommended as condition number 14. So the revised recommendation is as set out on the verbal update sheet, and I'll just read that out for Members, that subject to consideration, sorry, we have now considered the third-party representations, so that subject to conditions two to thirteen are set out on pages 51 to 56 of the agenda report. Amended condition one are set out on the update sheet, that's the written update sheet. Additional condition 14 are set out on the verbal update sheet. Informatives one to 16 are set out on pages 56 to 59 of the agenda report, and a section 106 agreement to secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the education contributions, that the reserve matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscaping be approved. Members will see the recommendation B in the event that a deed of variation to the legal agreement is not submitted and completed within six months, that is set out on the verbal update sheet. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed Rebecca. Turning now to public speaking, I ask Jeremy Holmes first to come forward, you have four minutes served from when you start speaking.
Thank you everyone for giving me the opportunity to talk this evening. I'm here this evening representing the residents of Allfold. And really, as you'd expect, I want to object to the amendments being made to the outline proposal, and I'd like to do that in three areas. The first one is around the location of shared and affordable housing, which is all located in the south-west corner of the development. And really for me, that has an impact on the density of the overall housing and really impacts how the development looks from the roadside. What I'm really keen to get across is that this development could actually be very good for Allfold, and I think there's a real opportunity here to do that, and at the moment, this development doesn't quite do that for me. I think it could be, I think it could be really good. Turning to the playground, I know it's been moved, that's excellent. As a father of two young children, I have to say, they are absolute experts in what makes a good playground. I have had extensive training. What we've got at the moment is something that actually my children wouldn't be that interested in. What I think we need actually is an all-weather playground, and in particular, one that has the basics. For me, that's swings, slides and climbing frames. What we've got there doesn't do that at the moment. The third one is, I know there's been mention of road safety, and in particular the rumble strips. There have been, as I'm sure the committee is aware, fatalities on the road in the last two years since, since the initial planning was put in place. I would urge the committee to, in whatever capacity it can, look at the road safety elements of this development and the impact it has on the local area, and set a challenge. Rumble strips, hmm, for me that's going to create a real increase in the noise pollution for a handful of houses, but certainly it's going to affect a number of people in the village, and for me, that's a real shame. That's something that will have an impact 24/7, every day of the year, on the residents who live in that location. Finally, and I appreciate from the committee, thank you for sharing that there was, the comments that came in very late have been taken into account. And finally, I'd just like to finish by saying, I think, I think the committee here has a real opportunity to make this development something that Allfold could be proud of. It isn't quite there yet, there is, there is some changes I think that could be made, in particular to how the, how the layout is, has been achieved and the, and the way it looks from the road, if that could be taken into consideration, I think the residents of Allfold would be much appreciated. Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Holmes. Call on Gary Worsfold to... And naturally, well, so you have four minutes.
Good evening Chairman, and Members of this evening's Development Control Committee. My name is Gary Worsfold of Scott Worsfold Architects, and I attended this same application when it came before you in last November. I was intending to offer a summary of that night's occurrences and the notes we took and how we've reacted to that and evolved the scheme and designed the scheme, working with your officers, the parish council and councillor Deeney. However, Rebecca's done a sterling job of reporting that to you, so I'll just move on quickly, just to simply report that we've worked hard, I and Carla Holmes, meeting your officers, the parish council, on numerous occasions, attended by councillor Deeney, and to address each of your observations, the result is a complete redesign. We now have a complete new layout with a central green that incorporates the leap, this is overlooked, and has a sense of arrival and enclosure, sitting as a foreground and backdrop to the existing trees to the north before Mercedes. We have reduced the number of two-storey and increased the number of bungalows. We have omitted attic flats and redesigned all to be two-storey, and with much lower roofs. We've also divided them and distributed them throughout. We've increased the parking by 18 spaces, but avoided any clusters, any on-street parking or lines of cars. All areas comply with spatial standards, and we have separated the underground gas storage, which is now simply a green space and buffer encased by planting. We have checked the layout exactly for tracking, vehicular movement and refuse, vehicle and passage, and it works perfectly. All amends have passed through a variety of stages, meeting with your parish council twice, sending out information sheets to local residents explaining all of these changes, and I would particularly like to thank councillor Deeney, the parish council, Carla Holmes, our clients, and all for a combined effort which has resulted in no objection from the parish and a recommend of approval to you this evening. Moving on to the observations by Jeremy, the location of shared ownership and affordable, we have no device or anything to explain really, we just, we've distributed it evenly and commonly throughout the site so that it isn't in clusters, so that it's shared within all the building blocks and the groupings that create the sense of place and character that is now before you. As it looks from the roadside, well, we have a very deep grass verge and a number of existing trees, and an increase in bungalows. We now just have, looking at the site layout that I can see, just four two-storey dwellings and two bungalows looking onto the Lockwood Road. It's a very much more rural, organic and sensitively placed scheme. Playground, well, along with Jeremy, I have a family, I have four children, mine would love to play within that play area, it represents a fantasy, the chance to explore and vary one's play, not simply just sitting on a swing and going back and forth, but perhaps our experiences are differences. As for the rumble strips, these have agreed with the County Highways Department, an important feature of road safety for the village. The noise is a by-product of that, the noise is to some extent minimal, but it is a product of the need to create road safety and enhancement to the village. The application before you comes to the recommendation for approval. We've worked exceptionally hard with your officers, with councillor Deeney and with the parish, and we're exceptionally pleased that the parish do not object. They've been helpful and sponsored all. The culmination is this before you this evening. Thank you for your time, good evening.
Thank you Mr Worsfold. Just one, I'll start the questioning off if I may. Rebecca, could you just show us where the affordable homes are, I think you were doing it a little earlier on, just so we get that one cleared up.
Yes, sorry Chairman, so I've popped on screen the site layout, as you'll see, both the blue and the yellow are all the affordable units, the difference in colour just shows the difference in tenure.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, any questions before we enter the debate? Councillor Deeney?
If I just respond to Mr Holmes, thank you for speaking tonight. Like you, I don't like the idea of rumble strips, but it's not an issue for debate tonight, unfortunately. But what I will try and do, and I've mentioned it before, I will try and arrange a meeting with Surrey County Council and the residents, to see if this is the most effective way of dealing with road safety, and see if there is any alternatives. So I'm quite happy to take that away, to see whether we can answer your questions, but it isn't something for tonight. And the playground issue, I mean again, this isn't a debate that we can have, it's not a planning issue, but I just wanted to put on record that we will try and get a liaison meeting for that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Follows, questions?
Thank you very much. I just want to, I know, I know we're not here to debate that issue on rumble strips, but do the officers have an opinion on that themselves about if there are any other alternatives to that? I'm just curious as to whether there is any alternatives.
It's not part of the planning regime, but yeah. Councillor Adams?
Thank you Chairman. Firstly, just a straightforward question, why are we going for solid block paving around all the houses rather than permeable solution, you know, where the water can drain through? And the second point really is, we saw some very nice designs and pictures of lots of those houses, but house type seven looks rather bland, have you got a better picture of house type seven? Because there are 11 of them.
Sorry councillor Adams, if we just scroll through, can you just tell us which house you're referring to? Sorry, just to add, the, the house type seven, they are shown within the agenda report. Unfortunately, I don't have a coloured elevational drawing to show you in the committee presentation, that's why it hasn't been included. Full details in terms of the appearance of the materials would be secured by way of condition. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Frost?
Thank you Chair.
I don't think I had an answer to my first question.
Sorry Chairman, sorry councillor Adams. Yes, with regards to the hard landscaping and the permeable paving, again, details of materials of that would be secured by way of condition. I believe that's condition four, sorry, it might be number two, of details of the hard surfaces, so indeed it could be that permeable paving will be, will be provided on site. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry councillor Adams. Thank you Frost.
Thank you very much indeed Chairman. Two issues really, I couldn't find it, maybe I haven't looked hard enough, electric charging points. We've brought this up on several planning applications, and we seem to be overlooking them, and we believe that in fact where you've got cars parking, we ought to be encouraging electric cars and therefore charging points. I couldn't find it in here, but if it's there, I'm happy. The second one is, I'm just a bit concerned about the interaction between, interaction between the general public and the people there of Allfold, and the developers. We, we've heard the last speaker talk about the people and councillor Deeney must have a halo round his head at the moment, and really feeling very, very bright and bushy-tailed. However, there are more people that live in Allfold other than the parish council, the elected representatives, and we are very much trying to encourage developers to set up ongoing dialogue with the people who live or are going to live in that area. And I don't see any reference to it, and one of our speakers tonight indicated there wasn't a lot of reference to it, and when I look at the orange update sheet, it does say there, lack of interaction between the developer and the community, and I want to know what is happening about that. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Unfortunately councillor Storey isn't here, he would have been the perfect one to address the question of electric charging points, but I think, I think Steve is going to talk to this one, please.
Thank you Chairman. Excuse me, yes, it is recommended condition three on page 52, deals with the issue of electric vehicle charging points and a scheme to be provided for dwellings, so hopefully that, that addresses councillor Frost's concern.
Can we just explain what you meant by this story?
Yes, can I just explain what I meant when I talked about the councillor's story? He attended a meeting last week on Saturday where they talked about electric charging, and there are currently three different systems. It's very similar to TV recording, you remember when we had Philips and Betamax and VHS? And they were all different, and we finished up with VHS, didn't we, although it wasn't the best system. At the moment, the intention is to supply electric points outside all houses and garages so that people have power there, and if they have electric cars, it will subsequently be up to them to fit the particular charging, fast charging unit which will come about. I think that's really all I understood from councillor Storey. He is going to address the matter with an email to all Members of the council, so that we all understand exactly what he heard, but that's my understanding of the matter, and I think councillor Coburn agrees.
The officers are worried about... Yes, I mean the officers are worried slightly that we're going to put in a condition that we can't deliver, and that was really why I asked councillor Storey if he would send an email almost immediately to inform us all of what he learned at the, at the meeting he went to, because if we can't deliver a charging point that actually works, there's no point in promising it, but obviously you can do it on individual houses, that's not a problem, we're only talking about the communal ones. So we just really wanted clarification on what we can and should be putting in our developments, but I'm afraid we didn't get that in time for this meeting.
Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you Mr Chairman, a question, could I have the, the two site plans of the before, that's it. Looking at that, I, it's slightly possibly misleading as to the width of the main road onto the site, are they the same width? Because the other one, the one on the, the new one looks narrower, but that, and better I have to say, but just, just can you confirm that the highway are the same width, or if they're not, how much less they are?
If you can bear with us Chairman, we're just checking, the scale rules in a frenzy.
Right, well, while we do that, perhaps councillor Foresty could ask her question then.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. It's more of an observation than it is a question. I'm one of these councillors who's never going to be happy about seeing our field, our green fields lost to development. However, the principle of development has been established, in this case for 55 dwellings, and what I would say is I would congratulate officers, the member and the parish council and the developer for actually working together to find a suitable compromise which addresses the deep concerns that was raised in November. And also, it sets a clear message going forward that if we are going to build on green fields, that we don't have to settle for second best, that we can go back and we can say to the developer, we can say to the parish council, if we work together, we have influence and we can do better. And I think this is a great example of working collaboratively, you can get a better result where people, not everyone's going to be happy all of the time, but if we can make strides in making it as best we can, rather than settling, settling for what's in front of us. I actually take the point exactly on board what councillor Frost said, that the greater community as well should have their involvement, it should be a continuing dialogue going forward, and I applaud everyone involved for actually making the effort to influence and improve a scheme that we could so easily have accepted but didn't. That's not to say I like building on green fields, however, thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you Chairman. Just to confirm, they are the same width, so they're both six metres. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, that's questioned over, let's move to debate. Councillor Hyman?
Sorry Chairman, I think, I think that's the opposite way around to what I thought was happening, I thought we were doing questions, because I and I think councillor Deeney have got, I've got a couple of questions, councillor Deeney appears to have three or four pages of them for you. Well, can we still do questions, or have we launched into...
No, certainly. No, certainly do questions so that we can have the debate on the four items in particular.
Okay, thanks. Referring to page 40, if I may, the middle of the bottom paragraph on that page, which talks about a change that's been made between what was that outline and has been consented and what's in front of us. I don't know that it's major and I think that I read elsewhere in the officer report, which is a very good officer report, I'd like to say to Rebecca, thank you very much, just that the change is that it is now linked into the public sewer rather than having an onsite sewage treatment system. And it says there in the middle, it says there will be connection to the existing failed sewer network via a public manhole located in the grounds of a neighbouring property of the site to the north. It doesn't state which. I haven't seen in here anything that says that the people who live there are happy with that and it wouldn't cause any problem for them, because this is a change from the original plans, isn't it? I just wonder whether you can clarify whether there's anything that we should be concerned about in that respect or not, because I couldn't find it there. The only other thing was, I noticed that there was a discussion in there as to whether we put on a condition, it's on page 46, mentions a condition regarding extensions. I wonder whether that's been included or whether we would have to propose that ourselves during the meeting later. Thank you, chairman.
Sorry, Rebecca or?
Okay.
Thank you. So in response to that, a question from councillor Hyman with regards to the connection, it would be to a public sewer, so there's a right to connect to the public sewer. That happens to be on private land, so there would be a requirement for the landowner's consent. But that's a private matter between the parties to be resolved, it's not a planning consideration before you this evening. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Councillor Dinas, you've got a question or two? No? Okay. In which case can we move to the debate proper? Councillor Dinas.
Sorry, it's clear as mud this is at the moment, so it wasn't a question, it was my views and where we've got to and where we've come from, if I may. I wish my colleague hadn't mentioned sewage because you'll know from last time how that upset me, so I'll move on before I say something I regret on that. 15th of April 2016, the permission was granted. I was hugely disappointed on the night and to be fair, that disappointment has never gone away. I still think it was the wrong decision, but we are where we are and permission was granted. We then came back on the 15th of November to look at the reserved matters. Now, my view is, and I've been honest with Carla Holmes, it was an awful design. There were houses in lines which looked like holiday homes at the seaside. You had a play area hidden in the top right-hand corner. All the affordable housing was below minimum requirements and standards. There were two-and-a-half storey flats which were totally out of keeping with rural life. And then we had blocks of car parking which actually the NCP would have been proud to have had. I think there was up to 10 or 12 in any one go. And it was said on the night, we don't like this, but we have to accept it. And it was also said, our hands are tied. I even said to the developers, and I was quite blunt, they should be ashamed of themselves as the eight affordable houses failed to meet the minimum requirements. Fortunately, it was refused and deferred. So where are we today? I think the design, the way the road is, is more of a hickory-pickety, more rural road. Houses are now not in straight lines. The houses are set at different angles. The play area, which was one of the reasons why we asked for deferral, is more of a central point, so as you enter the site and drive along, it's in the middle rather than hidden with the children hidden and playing. The affordable housing now meets the minimum requirements and therefore it doesn't differentiate between those in affordable housing and those not. The two-and-a-half storey flats are now two-storey flats, which is far more in keeping as the heights are the same as houses. The blocks of parking have been split far more sympathetically around the site and the parish council really wanted additional car parking, that was exceeding the minimum requirements. And they have done this by adding another 19 spaces. They've additionally, they've increased the allocation of bungalows from two to four, which I'm sure will be welcomed. So having been so critical at the last couple of meetings, it's actually nice to be praising. Allfold Parish Council and I have met the developers before Christmas and we had a frank discussion, I think that's the best way of putting it, about their responsibilities to their village. And over the Christmas period, Carla Holmes put a lot of effort into addressing the reasons that were put forward for the deferment. So we have to concentrate on those deferral reasons. There've been countless meetings, phone calls, emails to get where we are tonight. And I'm disappointed that, you know, some of the residents haven't been consulted as much as maybe they should have, although I know the parish have debated this in open numerous occasions. Is this application perfect? No. Do I want 55 houses? No, I don't. And I've said that to Carla Holmes. I'd rather, I wasn't having this debate with them. But I must thank Carla Holmes for their genuine hard work to improve the scheme from November, which they have. And even last night and this morning, I was in discussion with them probably five or six times about a concern regarding the gardens to the north, which is the area where the natural corridor by the boundary, I don't know if we've got that, we can put that one up, and the house there and the house to the north of that. And I requested an additional condition that really made sure that where the houses, so where the bungalows and the three houses, thank you, which you can point to, that their gardens clearly finished and then that area was separate. So gardens didn't encroach into that area and that natural boundary to the houses. And again, Carla Holmes, even as late as this morning, agreed that. And I'm hoping that condition 14 adequately covers that and maybe at the end, just to confirm that is clear enough to cover that. This scheme is far, far better than November's application. They have listened to the reasons for deferment, myself, the parish and the letters, and I never imagined I would say this in a JPC, and I hope it's the only time I have to publicly say this, but well done to the developers. Other developers should take note of this. It has proved that we do not have to accept poor applications, and I think that echoes what councillor Forrowski has said, which are designed to maximise profits over generally contributing to communities for the future. So it is not perfect, there will always be things that we can slightly change and argue whether it should be this type of playground, but this is one of the best applications I think I've seen in the last two or three years of proper engagement to listen to concerns from this group. Finally, I would say on the 15th of November, those are my colleagues who supported me and it was a lively debate. I think Allfold on the whole should be grateful for you because without, we would not have this vastly improved scheme. And as much as it isn't perfect, I will be supporting it and I think this is something that we should be far, far happier with than what we debated in November. Thank you, chair.
Thank you very much. I'd just add to that, that I think this is probably the fourth or maybe the fifth JPC application on reserve matters that we've had where our input has changed things quite dramatically and this is one. So let's move on with that. Councillor Dinas, I'll let you come back.
So I was going to come back at the end, but clearly I don't need to. Actually, I just continued. So first, I just want to confirm with Rebecca, the condition 14 clarifies the issue we discussed in relation to the house to the north of that area. And secondly, again, it was mentioned about the condition about, I think it was the bungalows not extending or putting buildings into the garden. And again, if I've missed that, it's very easy when you read documents, you have to keep going back to make sure it's covered. So that was the conditionary extension, which was page 46, my colleague here had raised it, about the parish council regarding preventing conversions etc. Has that been developed into a condition that we don't then get people putting in loft conversions etc, which will then defeat everything we've achieved tonight? And I'm sure that Carla Holmes will be supportive of that and they're nodding their heads at me, we have discussed this.
Rebecca?
Thank you, chairman, thank you councillor Dinas. So just to confirm firstly, condition 14, which is the additional recommended condition, that would secure details of all the proposed boundary treatment within the site, including those along the northern boundary. And then secondly, it would be condition nine, which is page 54 of the agenda report. So that refers to the removal of PD rights for classes A to E, which would include the extensions to dwellings, loft conversions as well as outbuildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Moving on, councillor Goodrich.
Very little to say, Mr Chairman, because councillor Dinas has said it all and it is really a superb scheme compared to the one before. And I would like to add that I find the house types quite attractive and I like them, you know, particularly the porches, the bay windows and the treatment generally. I think these houses are very attractive and the whole thing will look very nice indeed.
Thank you very much. Councillor James.
Thank you, chairman. It is a pleasure when developers listen. It makes our lives much easier and it's a shame that some of them, especially the one in Farnham, didn't listen and then they get an application that we unanimously, all of us, even the then portfolio holder objected to. Because if they started like this, we wouldn't have to waste officers' time, our time, the public time. If they started with what is the best that we can do, not what is the worst and then we'll see how much we have to chip away. So I am delighted that the developers actually can listen and Carla Holmes perhaps could do slightly better on some of their other ones, because this is for a village as good as it's going to get. Not all the residents will ever be happy, there's no doubt about that and I'm sorry for some of them, but they have listened and I'm absolutely delighted and it was worth, I'm sorry officers, that we deferred it at the time, but we were right. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor James. Do the officers want to say anything before I move to the recommendation? Nope. In that case, I move to the recommendation A, that subject to conditions two to 13 are set out on pages 51 and to 56 of the agenda report. amended condition one is set out on the update sheet. Additional condition 14 is set out in the verbal update sheet. Informatives one to 16 are set out on pages 56 to 59 of the agenda report. And the section 106 agreement secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the educational contributions, the reserved matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscaping be approved. Can I have those in favour, please, show? Unanimous, thank you very much indeed, members. Permission is granted. Move to recommendation B, that in the event of a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the education contributions is not completed within six months of the resolution to grant the reserved matters, that reserved matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscaping be refused for the following reason. Those in favour, please show. Thank you very much indeed, members. I don't think there's anything else. No need to exclude the press and public, no legal advice. Thank you, members, very much. Thank you, members, very much.